Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one, School Committee Meeting. As always, these meetings are audio and video recorded. I call this meeting to order. We'll start with introductions to my left. Actually, in front of me, sorry.
Natalie Barrows, Student Representative.
Good evening, Rob Mullen. Good evening, Mike Moran.
Good evening, Mark Branko, Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Brian McMahon.
Becky Stanton.
Anthony Tenero.
Jeff Boe.
Joe Messina, Assistant Minister.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will seek a motion to approve the March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one, School Committee Meeting Minutes and the April first, two thousand twenty-one, School Committee Meeting Minutes.
I'll make that motion.
A second here.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven, zero, zero. Correspondents?
At this time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Visitors, comments, and questions? I see none. Share the success. Natalie?
At TES, they have been following Dr. Flanagan's recent communication regarding transportation and have seen an increase in families' transition from the bus to providing their own transportation. Mrs. Kavanaugh would like to thank these families. Decreased bus ridership does help with contact tracing should the need arise. They are happy to report that their arrival and dismissal process has been going well. While the process may take a bit longer, they are confident that it is the safest, most efficient model. Mrs. Kavanaugh would also like to thank everyone for their continued cooperation following the arrival and dismissal protocols. Over fifty fifth-grade students have signed up to participate in the two thousand twenty-one Virtual Little Einstein's Science Expo. The scientists are asked to follow the five E model to complete their science projects, which is engage, explore, explain, elaborate, and evaluate. The projects and inventions have already been started and they can't wait to showcase their work. Thank you to Mrs. Maraca, Mrs. Rozier, and Mrs. Cooper for overseeing this great opportunity for the students. Their two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two preschool and kindergarten registration process is complete. At this time, the preschool program is full, and they will continue to have open enrollment for kindergarten registration. Any parent or guardian that has a child that will be age five by September first should contact the school if they have not registered yet. They are excited to welcome many new and returning families to TES in September. At TMS, they are celebrating Earth Day with their eighth graders tomorrow with activities in their science classes. Students will enjoy grade-level movies in the cafeteria and auditorium based on their work in their content areas on Thursday and Friday. TMS and THS Robotics Club is running a raffle for all students. Mr. Pollitt says that you can feel the energy in the building as we approach April vacation. And at THS, approximately sixty juniors took the SAT exam today. NHS is currently holding a spring food drive through Friday. MCAS and AP testing will begin the first two weeks of May. Senior Night for Football and Cheer is this Friday night against Littleton. Inclement weather may change the game day and time. They are two and two right now with two home games left. Their last game is in two weeks against Grant and Dunstable. The team has been working super hard all season despite adversity, and the leadership throughout the grades is growing. Sixteen members of the senior class will be recognized in May with the Academic Excellence Award for earning a cumulative GPA of a three point seven five or higher during high school. The Tingsborough Scholarship Trust is still happening this year with their April Door-to-Door Drive, and it will look a little different with the students bringing flyers to mailboxes that they are assigned to, and there will be two collection sites, with the first one being this Wednesday, which is tomorrow. Senior advisors have been working with class officers and Mr. Ogden to solidify senior activities. The prom will be held at an outdoor option provided by the Sea Glass at the Surfside Restaurant located directly beside the Sea Glass on Monday, June seventh. The event coordinator at the Sea Glass has been very helpful accommodating with this change. This outdoor option is owned and operated by the same owners as the Sea Glass. There is a covered patio in the venue promises to be a safer outdoor option for our prom. All seniors have been instructed... I'm sorry, I forgot. It has also been decided that only THS seniors will be able to attend this year's prom due to COVID-19. Prom tickets will be going on sale shortly. All seniors have been instructed to pay their class dues if they have not done so already. Any student experiencing financial difficulty has been advised to speak to Mr. Brodette privately if they are unable to pay their class dues. Many senior week's activities have also been planned and booked. Monday, there will be no school and observance of Memorial Day. Tuesday, there will be going to Hampton Beach. Wednesday, Kimball Farms has been booked for an outdoor luncheon and amusement. Thursday, plans are still in the works, and Friday, there will be an outdoor barbecue at the high school. We are very thankful and excited that all of our senior activities will be able to happen. And finally, congratulations to the April Student of the Month. Congratulations to Raymond Adams, Harley Croninger, Molly Flanagan, and Sarah LaBranche.
Thank you, Natalie. We have no subcommittee updates at this time. We have no personnel updates at this time. Unfinished business? TPS in-person learning model update. Dr. Flanagan?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll just jump right into the slide, Deck. I think we're all familiar with this at this point. Today's COVID activity, right now, this is actually not current. I just received notification about twenty minutes ago. So there are actually eight active cases in the district now, six at TES, one at TMS, and one at THS. So as of twenty minutes ago, that has been updated since this slide was produced. The next slide shows... The next slide shows a trend that we're watching. The community positivity rate over the last fourteen days is up. We anticipate that this Thursday, we will be up again. We had a nice trend of about nine or ten weeks where we were on a steady decline. Since then, we've turned around. I think that's reflective of what's going on in the Commonwealth as well as the country. So I'm hopeful that, you know, we turn the corner here and we start to see these numbers tick down a little bit. I anticipate we'll be in the red for one more week, and then hopefully, hopefully, we can get some relief and get back into the yellow after that. But this is just a positive trend over the last fourteen days. This is a new data point on our dashboard that we put... We thought this was important. As you know, we had to make a decision to pause in-person learning at the elementary school a few weeks ago. And part of the reason we did that is if you look on three twenty-six at TES, we had ninety-one closed contacts in addition to the number of kids that had tested positive. At one point, by the Tuesday of that week, we were at about a hundred and twenty identified closed contacts that were with kids in quarantine. So I think it's important that parents understand where the quarantine data is and how it's trending. It's important to know that this piece of information is a moment in time. We make a decision at eleven o'clock on a Friday morning to capture the number and put it there. It may change at eleven-ten. It's not cumulative for the week. It is a moment in time. So at eleven o'clock last Friday, that's where we were. So we generally shoot for, you know, Friday between ten and noon to capture a moment and put it up there just so parents can see where the trend is going. But I think it's just another piece of information. As we've done all along, we try to put as much information out there as possible and be responsive as we can so parents can make the best decisions for their kids. So we'll go to the next slide. So one of the things we talked about was when we paused the elementary school and in-person learning, it was an opportunity for us to come together as a leadership team and really have some important discussions and really push our thinking outside the box as much as possible to say, how can we restructure things so that we can limit the number of closed contacts? Our goal was to minimize closed contacts in school whenever and wherever possible. The first thing we did was put a communication out to parents saying, if you can drive, please drive, because we know the bus... The bus is problematic. The bus is problematic. One positive student on the bus could put out ten to fourteen students as close contacts. So we wanted to mitigate as much as possible. So we had our admin team become as creative as possible, push the limits of their schools. At the elementary school, we looked at recess. Now our teachers run recess. It's not parent professionals and our student interns. It's our teachers who know their kids, who know their class, who... The kids are more responsive to our teachers. Recession time is less than fifteen minutes, so students will not be in close contact at recess. We have structured games and activities for them as well. We also moved every class at TES to six-by-six. There will not be a close contact in TES for the learning day. Potentially for the bus ride, but not during the learning day. Transportation, as you heard Natalie's report from Mrs. Kavanaugh, that we are thankful that the parents have stepped up. You know, I have received a few emails about it takes a little bit longer in the morning to drop off and a little bit longer in the afternoon to pick up. Short of saying, it's the cost of doing business during a pandemic. It's kind of the give-and-take of being in person and protecting as many kids as possible. At TMS, Mr. Pollitt certainly looked at mask breaks. He redefined what those look like. He encouraged the teachers to make them shorter, quicker, get the kids in, get them out, and keep them apart. What we didn't want was we didn't want kids walking around the campus for eleven minutes next to their buddy with their mask off. We just didn't want to risk any of the close contacts. Those kids were on the same team in the same classroom for most of the day, so the greater opportunity to be a close contact with somebody, the more times you go outside. So we wanted those structured mask breaks. Additionally, Mr. Pollitt looked at... Mr. Hook looked at their entire school, and they're able to get creative, steal some space here, create adjacencies, and get every classroom at TES... Excuse me, TMS now six-by-six as well. So again, at TMS, we will not have a close contact in the school at this point going forward. Great news there. High school, same thing. They addressed the mask breaks. Mr. Ogden and Ms. Train went around to every classroom with the seating assignments, looked at the spacing there, and, you know, we're proud to say, you know, they can't do classrooms because one classroom has, you know, one teacher has four different sections that come into the classroom. Some have thirteen, some have seventeen kids in it. So you can't call that classroom, define it as six-by-six. But of our classes, eighty-nine out of a hundred and thirty classes at Tingsborough High School are six-by-six, and the percentage on that is sixty-eight percent. So sixty-eight percent of our classes at THS will not yield a close contact in the classroom. So I am thankful and appreciative of the principals for the time and effort they put into this. You know, we heard, you know, three feet to six feet, and we did that when it was easy. Then we saw what could potentially happen with close contacts, and as this has been the entire year, evolving situation, evolving process, they were reflective. They stretched their thinking. They compromised spaces, and they were creative. And, you know, our kids are pretty safe in our schools right now at six-by-six, which is great. So we're thankful for the work that they've done. Happy to answer any questions about that, if anyone has any questions about that. All right, we'll keep going. Travel advisory. I know there's been a lot of discussion about that, particularly with April vacation coming out. I know that there are some families who are going to travel. We strongly, strongly encourage families to please follow the travel advisory put forth by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. If you are leaving the state for more than twenty-four hours, we ask that you please get a negative COVID test within seventy-two hours of your return to be eligible to come to school. Can we mandate it? No. Can we police it? No. It is an advisory. But as we've seen, our learning model is fragile. I've said that ad nauseam. I apologize, but it's true. And I don't want to risk us having to put kids out. So we ask you to please, 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 follow the travel advisory. Getting tested is much easier now than it was even four months ago. So please, follow this advisory as best you can because it's just good... It's good for the community and the common good of the school system. Point twenty-two, budget update. So we had a great tri-board meeting last night, and I think, you know, it's important that we know where we land on some of these numbers. We know that the American Rescue Plan's coming and that the Tingsborough Public Schools will be getting five hundred ninety-one thousand dollars from that plan. That money goes through, Joe, two thousand twenty-four?
September two thousand twenty-four.
September two thousand twenty-four. So we have until September two thousand twenty-four to offset any revenue loss that might impact our staffing, to add programming that we may need. You're gonna hear about some in a minute, and to address any need that we have as a district relative to COVID. One of the comments I made last night at the tri-board is, and this committee's heard it, it's very difficult to set a budget when we don't know if we're coming back at three feet, at six feet, with remote learning. All of these unknowns right now, and I'm fearful that we're not going to know what that's going to be or where DESI is going to land on this until June, July. So we're trying to plan for all situations right now. This money certainly will be helpful. As you know, we've spent money that has come in, grant money in the past, to hire additional teachers so we could address concurrent learning. We've been strategic with our thinking. I will also say that Town Minister Matt Hanson did announce last night that the town is getting three point six million dollars, again, to offset revenues, same timeline to through two thousand twenty-four. And the town has been phenomenal, phenomenal, in working with us and supporting the schools. I said it on camera last night, and I'll say it again here. I think I called Matt four or five times over the past six months, say, Matt, we need this, and I never heard no. So it's just a great partnership we have, and we're so thankful to have that relationship with them. So as we start thinking about moving forward and landing on a budget number, Joe and I eventually will have a meeting with Matt. But a couple of things that we're gonna talk about. One is the summer program that's coming up. So I'm gonna let Dr. Branko kind of provide some highlights to this right now.
So I kind of teased this out a few weeks back at one of our meetings where I'd given you a kind of a skeletal overview of one of our brainstorms that we were looking at developing. Since that last meeting, we've gotten a lot of traction on this. So we've been working with Sarah Lewenzic, Brian Riley, Josh Evans from the Special Ed Department, as well as Greg Costa, who is our ESY Coordinator, and Katie Leahy from the middle school was just recently appointed to be the Extended Learning, Summer Extended Learning Program Coordinator. So that team has come together two or three times over the past couple of weeks to really tighten up what this is going to look like. We're gonna partner the Summer Extended Learning Program along with the ESY Program to maximize staffing, to maximize nurse coverage, to potentially maximize transportation, and I'll talk about in a minute. Also, that will allow us to have our intervention programs and our enrichment programs kind of married together so if families need early drop-off, late pickup, or coverage longer than the three hours of these programs, we'll be able to get that done. So I just want to publicly acknowledge that group of people because they're working really hard behind the scenes. We've already put the interest out to all of the faculty and staff to get parent professionals and teachers to apply for these programs in the summer for both the Summer Extended Learning Academy and the ESY Program. There'll be an email going out from my office on Friday, kind of giving a very high-level overview that the summer programs are happening. And then after we come back from vacation, the ESY Program and the Intervention Program Jump Start will look at all of the recommendations of children, and then families will get recommendation letters sent out to them, and then we'll start to populate that schedule and hire interventionist and enrichment offering teachers for the summer. We've had a lot of conversation in the office about transportation. A lot of the research around interventions says the number-one barrier to any enrichment during... Sorry, any intervention during the school year or in the summer is transportation. So I'll let Dr. Flanagan and Mr. Messina speak a little more to the magical numbers behind this decision if they need to, but we feel pretty confident that we're in a position to be able to offer busing for the intervention students and the ESY students for the summer program, which is a big win because we know that it's difficult for parents to get kids in here for quick doses of intervention programming. So all of that's moving forward. Very proud of that work.
Yeah, I think, you know, when you talk transportation, you know, part of the funding from the American Rescue Plan is to address the needs of kids. And in this summer program, I do not envision it being a one-and-done. I think this might be a program that hopefully we can grow and have for many years to come. But if our kids need additional time in school and they've been identified as needing additional supports or interventions, we need to do everything we can to get them there. So if we know that transportation is going to be a barrier and obstacle, we're gonna address that through some of this funding. So that's the plan, to fund this transportation through this grant money right here. Additionally, as we continue down the bullets, Mr. Messina has worked with the town administration to identify tuitions, out-of-district tuitions, as well as transportation as recognized fixed costs on the school side, which is important because historically, that's not been necessarily recognized as a fixed cost. It's kind of just been part of the school budget. But to have it recognized with other town fixed costs is great for us. So that was a good work by Mr. Messina. And again, timeline, I believe we'll probably have a meeting, maybe not next week, but within the next ten days, I saw, I would say, with the town administrator, to get a better sense of where we're gonna land on a number. So those are the budget drivers that just... And I think we heard good information last night at the Board of Selecting. Another point that came up last night at the Board of Selecting meeting, which was interesting, was the potential discussion of some of the HCA, the Host Community Agreement canvas money potentially coming to the schools to support some kind of wellness, coach, instructor, teacher, to teach kids about drug awareness and certainly mental health awareness and just really work on the social-emotional development of our kids. Selectman Rowe brought that up last night, and certainly appreciative of that and him recognizing that there is a need in the community and the schools. So interesting to see where that goes, and hopefully we'll be able to land on that somewhere. So we appreciate that. So the next slide. Natalie stole some of my thunder here. End of year celebration. So the charge to the administration team was very clear. Three words: no drive-throughs. End of year celebrations. We want to celebrate these kids. We want to get them on campus as best we can. And really, I understand where we were last year. We're in a very different spot now. So we want to bring our kids together as best we can and celebrate them. So in conversations with the administrative team, this is where we are. Right now, graduation is June fourth. It's gonna be on Pierce Field. There'll be six guests per graduate. Academic excellence is going to happen. That's gonna happen in the auditorium here. There's about sixteen, I think you said sixteen seniors, Natalie? Three guests per senior. That'll happen on May twentieth. Senior awards will happen. That will probably happen in the gym, and that will probably be only for students. We will have somebody from our tech department tape it, film it, stream it if we can, make it available for parents. But we're gonna have close to a hundred kids that are recognized, so we can't bring in families. And I completely support Jeff Ogden's. I want... Let's get the kids in and celebrate them. Mom and dad can watch it. We can get them a tape, and we can stream it. But let's get these kids there so that they can celebrate each other, and I think that's important for seniors. So that's gonna happen on May twenty-seventh. And the prom, I think this came out as part of the DESI advisory that everyone should move their prom to after graduation just to protect the graduation event. So as Natalie said, our prom's gonna be at the Sea Glass on Monday, June seventh. You did talk about other senior activities in there as well. TMS will have an eighth-grade celebration, end-of-year celebration, on June eleventh. That'll also be on Pierce Field, four guests per student. I envision that, it's a Friday, I envision that being like an eleven to noon kind of celebration for all our eighth graders. And then on June fourteenth, he wants to have some kind of celebration or outing with the eighth graders as well. Don't know exactly what that's gonna be, what it's gonna look like right now, but there will be some kind of celebration for them. TES, fifth-grade end-of-year celebration will happen. That'll also be outside on the field, bicentennial field. There's discussion now, and I don't think they've landed on it yet, whether it's gonna be team-by-team celebration and/or the entire grade-five celebration. I think they're leaning to grade-five in whole because if you're doing the setup, might as well do it once, do it right, and call it a day. So two guests per student for that. Field day is gonna happen on June eleventh with a rain date of June fourteenth. And that's about it right now. So I commend all the administrative team, and actually, the teachers. A lot of teachers and advisors had a lot of input in this. And I think everyone knows what we went through last year, and they all want to celebrate the kids in person this year, and that's been the charge. So we're very excited for that. Nine A's, Mr. Messina.
Thank you, Dr. Flanagan. So our budget subcommittee, as an ad hoc committee, met four times over the last few months. Ms. Stanton, Mr. Boe, Mr. Mullen, myself, Dr. Flanagan, Dr. Branko, had a lot of good discussion about numbers and a lot of how the operation works financially. Part of our final discussions at our last meeting were to take the next steps to become a formal budget subcommittee of the school committee. So per our school committee policy, it is up for the school committee chair to appoint an organizational chair for that subcommittee. And once formed, then the subcommittee can work with the policy subcommittee to develop their scope and responsibilities of that committee. So at this point, I think reaffirming the members of the subcommittee and asking the chair, the school committee chair, to appoint an organizational chair.
So first, I think we need a motion to formally adopt the budget subcommittee members and then have myself appoint an organizational chair per our school committee policy one point twelve.
I'll make that motion.
A second here.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven, zero, zero. Do we need to appoint the chair right now, organizational chair now?
If you would like, yes.
Okay. Any nominations?
I'll nominate Rebecca.
I'll accept it. Thank you.
Need a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven, zero, zero. Congratulations.
Nine B's also. Mr. Messina.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. So annually, the school committee generally will make motions to send warrant articles to town meeting warrant. Tonight, we have two. One is the annual special town meeting warrant for Medicaid reimbursement. This is based upon Medicaid funds received at the town level during fiscal year twenty. And once free cash is certified by the Department of Revenue, it's made available for us to supplement this year's budget. So this year, that figure is a hundred and nine thousand five hundred eighty-eight dollars. I don't know if you want to take these separately or together. What are the will of the chair?
I think we can do them together.
Okay. The second one, this is actually a warrant article that you voted to put on last year's annual town meeting warrant. Through the various bouncing around of the dates for the annual town meeting due to the pandemic, it was accidentally missed on the final warrant at the town level. So apologies at the town level, and it is placed currently on the draft warrant at the town level. But I thought it wouldn't necessarily be such a bad idea for the school committee to reaffirm this warrant, to go onto the town meeting warrant. And this basically does what we did for the high school. It allows the school committee to enter into a twenty-year pricing agreement for the solar panels. You may recall that the actual solar panel placement are done at no cost to you. Your only commitment is to agree to pay the electricity that they generate for twenty years. By law, you can only enter into anything under three years without a town voter approval. So this is just a reaffirmation that you would seek to do this.
Thank you, Mr. Messina.
Thank you.
I'll make...
Just if I had one point just for the public, Mr. Messina, we've seen great savings on the high school solar panels.
Yes.
Give some kind of ballpark.
I mean, we're currently locked in at nine point eight cents per kilowatt hour from those solar panels. We're currently paying nine point one for supply from Constellation New Energy. However, we have to pay National Grid about fourteen cents per kilowatt hour for those, for that electricity to be delivered to us. The panels on this roof come at no cost. We pay nine point eight, and that's it. So nine point eight cents locked in for twenty years with no delivery charge to National Grid, I think is a great deal for the committee. So if the voters are willing to support us on this, most likely be looking at either the elementary school and/or the Lakeview School for future projects, probably the summer of twenty-two.
I have a question. So solar panels, could that be built into the middle school project, or would that be something we have to do after the fact?
That'll be something that we'll talk about throughout the process.
Okay.
Sustainability is one of the things that we're talking about as well, so yeah.
So that's all part of that committee? Okay.
I just have a question as well. I know I was part of the committee that designed, who put those panels on the high school. Just wanted to reaffirm that maintenance is on the company that installed them and all liabilities on them for fixing them and any other types of issues?
Correct. So...
Damage to the school.
So the way the panels are installed on the roof, they don't enter into the roof membrane. So we're not harming our warranty for the roof because we recently had this roof done.
Yep.
We certainly wouldn't put a project up there that was gonna harm the membrane of the roof and void out our warranty. So they actually sit on some stones that hold them in place, so they're not bolted in or anything else. Maintenance is all on Select Energy to keep them going, you know, and it's in their best interest to keep them going because if they're not generating electricity, they get nothing from us. So they need to, you know, they need to keep them running. They monitor them off-site. If there's an issue that they notice, they'll send a technician out to make sure that they're running at peak efficiency.
I just want to make sure that that was reminded to the audience watching, you know, for any new people in town or people who may have forgotten about it. Again, we're getting a good deal, low cost, and we're not responsible for maintaining the work by companies. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chair, do we have a... Mr. Messina, do we have a dollar amount possibly that we're saving either monthly or over the course of the last twelve months?
I will be happy to get that. I will be happy to get that to you. I don't have it right here, but be happy to send it to you.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. I will seek a motion to approve the warrant articles as written to be submitted to the Board of Selectmen.
I'll make that motion. I'll second that motion.
Discussion. All is in favor?
Aye.
opposed? That carries seven zero zero.
Thank you.
Mr. Messina, why don't you keep going? Finance?
I don't even want to let me catch my breath. For signing of bills, we actually had nine warrants presented to the committee tonight. I have them back, all approved. In your drive is the list of warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts as always. Also, in your drive for signing of bills, Mr. Mullen, as your single signer, came in last week and signed twelve warrants. Again, the list is in your drive, warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts. For signing of payroll, three payrolls since we last acknowledged them, the payrolls of March fifteenth, March twenty-ninth, and April twelfth. In your drive are those warrant numbers and accounts and amounts as well. For the financial package, in your drive are the three reports that make up your financial package as always, the school committee budget at the end of March, the revolving account balances at the end of March, as well as the student activity accounts at the end of March. Now we'll leave enrollment to the chair.
Thank you. As of April first, two thousand twenty-one, at the elementary school, we have seven hundred and fifty-nine students. The middle school has three hundred and ninety-four students. The high school has four hundred and forty-four students, and there are twenty-two out-of-district students for a total of one thousand six hundred and nineteen students. Did you have any other?
That is it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Messina.
Mr. Chair, before we move on, if I could go back to the solar panel article, does that article only reference the high school?
No.
Contract or all projects?
So the original warrant article, the last time it was brought to the voters, some members of the finance committee thought it best that we only start with this building and didn't allow us just to say a general twenty-year pricing agreement for all buildings. So we got the approval from the voters unanimously for this building. We're now going in front of the voters and saying, this has worked out so well, we want it for any school.
For any future. That's what I wanted to make sure. Because I knew
It was amended on town floor, that. Mr. Messina, correct?
It was actually amended prior to
It was.
At the request of the finance committee for their support.
Okay.
Thank you.
And these are, these are all school-controlled buildings. So even the Lakeview School, while not active with our children, it's at least with Valley Collaborative, this allows us to, to put panels on that. And as Dr. Flanagan mentioned, you know, if and when we do get a new middle school, certainly be working to get panels up on that.
That's why I wanted to make sure that it wasn't, that the warrant article wasn't just for these existing, that we could do this for all future projects. So thank you.
Well, it will say all schools, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. School committee discussion. Natalie?
I'm all set. Thank you.
I have nothing this evening.
Thank you. I'm good.
All set. Thank you.
Jeff?
Just I look forward to working with the formal budget subcommittee members. I think the first meetings were great. I think we talked a lot about numbers and finance and operations. So look forward to getting back in and digging in. Thank you.
All set. Thank you.
I'm all set. Thank you.
I just want to thank the, all the teachers and the administrators for putting together an in-person end of the year celebrations. I think it's really important, and I know they worked hard to pull that together, and I thank them.
I, after attending the tri board meeting last night, I want to share my appreciation to the Board of Selectmen and the finance committee for working so well with the school committee. I think it's so important for us to have such a positive working relationship with them, and I appreciate that relationship. Similar to what Julie said, I'm so glad to see the end of year celebrations coming back. A little bit different, but still having them. So that's really important. And just asking the families of town to, you know, please be conscientious over April vacation, or really after April vacation when you're sending your students back. If you think they might have been exposed, or you think they might be exhibiting symptoms, you know, please follow the protocols.
So I would like to just recognize and kind of plug the Tingsboro Scholarship Trust. They do a phenomenal job every year raising funds for graduating seniors. April is historically their biggest drive in community. The kids used to go door to door to raise money. All the money goes to graduating seniors of Tingsboro residents, whether at BG, Notre Dame, Innovation. But they go to Tingsboro kids. So, you know, these kids have had a rough year. So anything we can do to support them and get some, a couple extra bucks in their pocket would be great. So Tingsboro Scholarship Trust does a great job and is a dedicated group of people, and they give a lot of time and a lot of effort. And thank you for them for all the efforts.
Okay. I wanted to thank TES and TMS for getting to full six by six. I didn't think we had a prayer of getting there at the middle school. So I think that's an amazing accomplishment. And then having sixty-eight percent of the high school at six by six is another great accomplishment. I think that's a testament to the approach we've taken from day one where we don't just make a decision and sit on it. We're continually improving and trying to be better. So great job there. Really excited to hear the seniors are going to get end of year celebration, a graduation on time, an actual prom. I think it's really, really good to stack in back to some normalcy. Becky, you mentioned the tri board last night. One of the things that stuck out to me was Senator Kennedy mentioned how much he enjoys the tri board meeting. He's actually trying to push his other districts to hold similar meetings because they're so effective. So I think that's a testament to the good job we do there. We do have a need for executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. We will return from executive session only to adjourn the regular session meeting. This action requires a roll call vote. Need a motion?
I'll make the motion. A second here.
Any discussion? Mr. Mullen?
In favor. In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor?
That passes seven zero zero. We are in executive session. Have a good night, everybody.